Yeah, that's sufficient. I'll go ahead and read it into the record. A conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. Name SDGME era forecast proceeding A 200401.
Do you have to take roll officially?
Yeah, yeah, hang on.
Let's convene the board first and ask for the roll call.
Director Baber.
Here.
Director Montgomery Stapp.
Here.
Director West.
Here.
I see Chair Musca just joined. Let me promote him to panelist. Vice Chair Padia.
Present.
And let's see, we should be having Chair Musca on. Can you hear us? Chair Musca?
I can hear you and I apologize to everybody to the board and everybody that's viewing just having a bit of technical issues.
No worries. You're the last one. If you could just say here, we'll complete roll call. Thank you. We have all board members present.
Good. Joe, are you up? The board will convene in closed session to take up the items as noticed on the agenda. General counsel, do you want to read them into the record again, please?
Yes, I apologize for going out of order. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. Name SDGME era forecast proceeding A 2004014. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll move into closed session and we'll come back to open session as soon as our closed session is done. Thank you.
Do we have to leave here, right?
Yes, we'll leave here and then there should be a link bill for the closed session.
Yeah.
Hey, Ryan, I see you just rejoin. Hey, Ryan. Are you having trouble joining the closed session?
Are you there?
Yeah, I just emailed you the closed session link in case you didn't have it.
I did. It's just for some reason my assistant put the wrong link in my Outlook. Okay, let me try that.
Yeah, it should be on the top of your inbox now.
Thank you.
Hey, Megan.
Hey, Eddie.
Hey, how you doing, Sebastian?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Um, just letting you know, uh, obviously, we're still in closed session. Uh, we're right now recording. Friendly reminder, and we'll get started when they return.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Sebastian, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, are the board members on?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, they're still in closed session.
Oh, okay, okay. I was like in 5:06, like, am I missing something?
No, no, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, and to everyone else in the public, um, if you could, if you don't mind holding tight while they come back, once they do, we'll go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Sebastian.
Thank you. Hello, Director Baber. Hey, hi.
Uh, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sebastian, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great.
Let me move some people over. Uh, Chair Mosca, I believe you're muted.
Oh, sorry, all right. I'll, I'll repeat what I just said. Uh, I just said, I, I, I see some people online, uh, and I apologize on behalf of the board that, that we're a bit late for open session, but we were just in closed session. Uh, so we're gonna start in a couple of minutes, just waiting for everyone, uh, to get on, on, uh, on this Zoom call. Sebastian, can you tell me when all board members are present?
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Bill, looks like he's got a floating head. Sorry.
Chair Mosca, we're just waiting on Vice Chair Padilla, um, just so you're aware.
I will give him, uh, one more minute, and then we will, we'll start.
Uh, Vice Chair Padilla should be joining in a few seconds, now we can go ahead and get started. There you go.
All right, are we recording, Sebastian?
Uh, yes, Chair.
Perfect, I'll, we'll get started now. I'm gonna call this meeting of the San Diego Community Power to order. It is 5:12. This is our November, November meeting, it's November 19th, uh, and I will call this board meeting to order. Um, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sebastian, do we have a flag to put up?
Uh, we will next month, Chair, my apologies.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Can we do a roll call vote, Megan?
Director West?
Present.
Director Montgomery?
Here.
Director Baber?
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla?
Present.
Chair Mosca?
Here. All right, are there any changes to the agenda as posted? All right, I haven't received anything. Megan, have you received any, um, requests for changes?
I have not.
All right, um, let's move on to public comments. Megan, um, are, have you received anything in terms of public comments or general counsel or?
Yes, we, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt? Can, may I report out on the closed session?
Sure, I apologize. Uh, General Counsel, would you like to report out on our closed session that was held just before this open session?
Yes, thank you. Uh, for the record, there was no reportable action taken by the board. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We have, uh, one general public comment, um, and it is from Clean, uh, Jason Anderson. "Clean Tech San Diego would like to encourage SDCP and SDGNE to establish a more collaborative working relationship whereby issues important to both entities and more importantly to regional ratepayers are addressed to the extent they can be through local efforts. By working together, SDCP and SDGNE can create market certainty which in turn will benefit our local environment, our local economy, and all members of our community. SDCP and SDGNE both play a critical role in addressing our region's energy issues and working together, having a unique opportunity to truly change the way this region tackles some of our most pressing issues." And that concludes the general public comment.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent, uh, consent calendar. First item, uh, we have minutes to approve, uh, from our meeting on October 22nd, and also the second item is a delegation of authority to the interim CEO to approve and, uh, and pay for financial security requirement upon CPUC determining SDCP's amount. Uh, do we have any comments on those two items?
We do, uh, I think we have one on item two, yes. Um, for item two, we have Matthew Vasilakis. "Good afternoon, board members. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we want to highlight another concern over SDGNE's pattern and practice of seeking to undermine SDCP's establishment, this time with a security requirement bond. This requirement should not be in question or contentious and should follow the standard model set forth by state law, state law and regulators. However, SDGNE appears to be trying to manipulate this requirement to their advantage to extract what limited financial resources SDCP has by bloating the bond to handicap the program before it even begins serving customers. We ask the board to keep an attentive eye on SDGNE and push back firmly on any, on any and all efforts by the incumbent utility to undermine SDCP's launch." Thank you. And that concludes the consent calendar, uh, public comment.
All right, thank you. Uh, do my board members have any questions or comments on the consent calendar? If not, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Director West, so moved.
Uh, Director Baber, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries with all board members or directors voting yes.
All right, let's move on to our regular agenda. Moving from the consent calendar to the first item on our regular agenda, which is the third item on the agenda is operations and administration administration report from the interim CEO, Bill Calahan.
Okay, actually, we're going to share this duty. I'll share it with Cody because some of the items she's been working on for some time and she's much more conversant in where we are than I am. My focus today will be on further implementing our new organization structure and starting the recruitment program to fill the boxes that we have in the org chart with new people who can actually help us in this fast-paced run-up to providing service in March that we have. And so we I have a kind of a special announcement to make. First of all, the first hire that I would like to report on is that we have a new we have a new chief operating officer who is fairly familiar to you all, and that's Cody. She will be assuming the position. We have got a firm date about a month from now. We want to give her an exit strategy from where she is and you know, play that the way she would like to have it. We're anxious to to get her on full time and I think she'll be a real asset to us. And she has a lot of contacts and I'm glad we were able to to come to to an agreement. And so she will officially probably by the next board meeting, I hope, have that have that title official. So congratulations to Cody. So that's our first hire as a permanent employee. We're glad to do that. We're also working and congratulations to her. We're also working on filling the position of the executive assistant. We have some folks backfilling basically me and and Cody and most of all Sebastian trying to do some some duties that can could best be handled by a a clerical type instead. So we're actually going to be doing that right away. Doing it with a temp agency first, so we can do a temp to hire, see if they're capable of doing the job and then they fit and that sort of thing. And that allows us to get someone on fairly quickly, someone from the local area, for example. We also are going to commence interviews for the resource director of power resources position, the one we actually had gone out and advertised for, and they've been on hold. So we're ready at this point to resurrect that effort and actually start to interview folks. We're also going out for a finance manager position, not the CFO, but the finance manager position, the person that's actually really going to get the get the day-to-day work done. We're still using Mike Maher, who is our CPA firm that we have on board to help us with the bank, getting the various the lock boxes and things like that at a fairly high level set up with Birmingham City Bank. And so, but we needed someone in the finance position. You know, right away as we need someone in the resource area right away as well. So we're going to be working with Tom Wukowski from Encinitas, who has been very, very helpful to us and has pledged his people's help as well in terms of advertising and screening and and doing all the legwork really to help us free us up to do other things. And they're the experts at it anyway. So I want to give a special thanks to him because that's going to allow us to to get it set up, which we virtually are there and then start to work through these additions on a systematic way and get it done in a timely fashion and be able to make sure we can meet our commitments as we go forward. So with that, that's really all I have is you'll see some changes. You'll see some new faces and most of all, you'll see a lot more ability for us to handle the workload that keeps mounting every day. We'll bring, we are optimistic that the folks we can be in will be the best and the brightest and you'll be proud of us when we get there. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. You know, and I've been having almost weekly conversations with Bill and very excited that we're building out the team and and you know, with this team kind of coming together, that's that's, you know, this is going to be the way that we're able to tackle all the challenges coming up. And so Bill is putting together an amazing team, starting with Cody as our first employee, permanent employee. And very excited about the fact that Cody is is going to be part of the team and staying with us and and working hard and helping us get this off the ground. She has a lot of institutional knowledge and everything that's going on from the inception. And so she's very well-versed and just really excited about having her as part of the team, especially with some of the challenges that are coming up.
Cody, you want to want to pick up from there on the report?
Sure. And thank you. Thank you all. I'm very excited. I'm also very excited to have one job. And so, okay. One big one. That's very big, but it's one. Okay, the next item in in this report goes through different contracts that were added. We try to keep you informed, even though Bill has delegation authority to sign certain contracts under a certain amount. We still like to share with you any activity in that arena. And just to keep you updated. And so there's one executed in one pending that we'd like to just share with you. The first is a contract executed with Dave Colke to assist in power resources, excuse me. And he has extensive experience with the KISO system as well as resource planning and will help bridge some of the work we need to do in that arena until we bring on staff in that space. And he's been helpful and up and running. Another contract that we'd like to award soon is a mail and print vendor. As you all probably recall, we're required to mail and print notifications to our customers and that begins in January, which is fast approaching. So we expect that initial dollar amount to be within Bill's signing authority, but wanted to let you know that will be coming. We've done some informal requests for proposals in partnership with our marketing firm, Civilian. And then we have approved internally sponsorship guidelines, just to give us some criterion ways to evaluate requests for sponsorship of regional events and are excited to announce that we agreed to sponsor our first organization and it will be a community choice energy forum aligned. It's looking for as far as just outreach, target audience and those types of things. And of course, the topic. And it's exciting opportunity for us to also start using our brand and kind of unveil who we are and our logo and all those things that we've been working hard on. And the next area in this report goes through power resource solicitations, just keeping you up to date on that. We're still in negotiations with some of our long-term renewable contracts that we solicited on our own. So we issued our own RFP. We also, if you recall, responded to SDGNE's RFP, or I believe it was an RFO request for offers for power back in the summer and initially were denied being awarded any of those, but have since approached them requesting bilateral conversations and negotiations around procuring that power. It's a large amount of power that they need to sell because they no longer need it. We need to buy it because it's for the people that they purchased it for. And we're awaiting more information from them in order to keep that moving forward. We we need some renewable power to to power up our our customers. And then as of resource adequacy, we talked quite a bit about this last meeting. Things have moved quite far along there. We're at 94% procurement of our RA obligations. We did file a waiver for local RA and we're waiting to hear feedback from the PUC on that, but we do anticipate approval of that. Then the next, let's see.
Cody, just a question on the the RFO that that we participated in with SDGNE, they had responded negatively to our our request and then and then we we spoke with them and then they we've kind of decided that we're all going to, as you say, enter into bilateral discussions with them about the purchasing of that energy. The last time it was said that that we're still kind of waiting on them and waiting to discuss. And so just kind of trying to understand in terms of the last month, has there been any activity with regard to that, the purchasing of that energy?
We had, I'm trying to remember what happened between last month and this meeting. We did probably have a conversation or two with them. We also procured resource adequacy from them so that those conversations were happening concurrently. On the RPS front, not a lot has happened since last month. They sent us a master agreement to review. And we're waiting more information from them on on one of the next steps beyond that, which is the master agreement with the pretty standard agreement, just to start trading power with somebody. Not a lot has happened.
All right. So we don't have to get into it tonight, but but there's obviously, we're also working with PEA on a strategy in terms of you know, whatever the scenarios may be in terms of whether this is a something positive comes from this discussion or not. We're working on a long-term strategy with with our our folks at PEA and anybody else that we're bringing on for procurement.
Yes, we're actively, I'll just say we're actively pursuing about a half a dozen deals right now. They're being actively discussed among the resource group in terms of possible purchase.
In lieu.
Pardon me?
In lieu of.
Yeah, in addition to, and you know, I mean, we're a lot, so we have ways to go. So
All right.
We're carrying them all on simultaneously and we can actually, but for the right prices and whatnot, we can use them all and more.
Great. Thank you.
The next item is our, the board requested several meetings ago and update on the policies. We have a slew of items to check off the list as we're starting up. And that's attached here. I won't go through it because we have a couple other items covering some of them, but would like to point out the amount of green that is now on that document and or yellow, which means it's in progress. So in addition to all the other things that we're doing and moving along, we're also making progress on our our policy matrix and checking those off the list, or at least getting them started and moving along. Let's see, the next item, item E, as I'm on now, if you're following along. And this is continuing to discuss with both Calpine, who is our data and back office partner, and SDGNE, the phasing of customers. So the dates of our of our phases haven't changed too much. It's really looking at which customers enroll in each phase. And again, more of the same here from last month. So I don't have too much new to report, but we're trying to finalize it in the next few weeks. It's a lot of really tedious Excel sheet analysis of which customers are in which phase and, you know, sometimes line by line of if it's a customer of a certain type, can we enroll them now? Or do they have to enroll later? Those types of things and then balancing the load that we're looking for. Nothing, again, nothing to report here specifically. Just want to let you know those conversations are ongoing and being productive.
Chair Moscow, can I ask Cody a question real quick, please? Yeah, Ms. Hiven, I was wondering if have we, I asked for two meetings ago, the kind of the timeline with SDGNE so it'd match up with the procurement of our, what you're just talking about. Have we received that from SDGNE yet? So we can line it up to make sure it's meeting all of our wickets along the way.
Timeline and you want something in writing, right? An agreement in writing. Yeah. I'm hoping that will come when we finalize these phasing discussions. So we would like to see, I think, on our end, something along what you're asking, which is an agreement. And they're considering writing a letter to document the process. And so we'll have to kind of figure out where we land on that, but we are working towards that. And that's that's definitely on our list that we know is important to you.
Great. Thank you.
And then the last item in this is regulatory affairs update. I'm just going to immediately hand that over to Todd Tostel. Tostel IPC is our regulatory council and has, I will say, has been, feels like the regulatory arena is full of landmines and we're always juggling and working hard, but this month in particular has been it seems like more than usual. So he's been working hard and I'll hand it over to him to provide an update on that. Here, I'll mute Ty.
I don't hear Ty.
Yeah.
Mute Ty.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Hiven. Good afternoon, board members. Appreciate that. We got a few items to discuss with you all this afternoon. And it has been a fairly intensive period over the past several weeks on regulatory matters, certainly. So I'll just launch right in then. You'll recall that we, along with CEA and SCA and CALCCIA are parties in SDGNE's PCI trigger application. SDGNE originally, they undercollected the PCI due to the cap, the PCI cap that was put in place is originally designed to protect against rate volatility, but it included a relief valve, if you will, for the utilities in the form of the trigger, which permitted them to collect mid-year if the balance reached, balance was excessive. All three investors on utilities filed trigger applications. This is the first year the trigger applications were permitted under the PCI decision that was adopted in 2018. All three utilities filed similar applications and so, you know, seeking changes in rates. And so I think it's it's safe to say that the the cap and trigger is, you know, not not serving to protect against rate volatility. SDGNE originally sought to recover the $8.92 million trigger balance through changes in rates over a three-month period. We submitted a brief, a joint brief with the other parties that I mentioned and recommended a 36-month amortization period. SDGNE's, I think they've modified their position a little bit and are now seeking a six-month amortization period. Nevertheless, this is, you know, something that concerns us. Well, it doesn't directly affect SDCP customers. You know, we have been participating to make sure that there were, you know, fair amortization periods and other measures in place in case that this happens again. There have been some settlement discussions that have been taking place. And so we will wait and see how things develop on that front. In addition to that, SDGNE filed its November testimony update in the era forecast proceeding. And we, there were a couple of things that we brought to their attention that have been corrected, including an $84.5 million error. And so that was corrected. Unfortunately, there are some other issues that have come to light in SDGNE's error forecast application. The November testimony update, which was just filed on November 6th, shows a decrease in the the error balance of $330 million. And the effect of that would be a reduction in the average bundle rates by about three cents per kilowatt hour or 12.3% relative to current effective rates. So that is a very substantial decrease in their rates of magnitude we really haven't seen before. What we discovered looking into this in greater detail is that an important part of the calculation to determine races, the projected sales forecast, which in part of that is dependent on a load forecast. And what we discovered was that SDGNE has not incorporated departing load into its sales forecasts for purposes of the error forecast proceeding. So we have taken a number of steps to address that directly with SDGNE and we filed comments. We have special counsel working on this proceeding. And so while from Keys and Fox and so Jake Schlesinger and Tim Lindell from Keys and Fox working on this and they submitted comments yesterday. Those comments should have been distributed to you all. So you can take a closer look. They they do really focus on the methodological error that I was describing a little bit earlier. So nevertheless, this is problematic for for SDCP, certainly when we're looking ahead. Certainly that, you know, the these rate reductions of this magnitude were not expected at all. And so that's problematic, certainly something to be taken into consideration in SDCP's rate-making process. By the same token, it's also very problematic for bundle customers because at the the rates that SDGNE is proposing, they will severely undercollect Revenues from the bundle customers. And so there's also an era trigger application process that's similar to the PCI trigger application process. And based on the, you know, large magnitude of the proposed rate decrease, it's very likely that SD Genie will have to file. An era trigger application and increase their rates potentially in mid-year. So we're looking at something like a whipsaw effect going on for bundle customers there. So nevertheless, we, you know, we'll keep up our efforts on on this proceeding. And, you know, do everything we can to straighten it out. Moving along to the rear edge management plan. I'll just, just by way of background. The you will recall that the Public Utilities Commission issued a very wide ranging decision on customer disconnections. That applies to. All customers are all residential customers, I should say. And one of the specific programs that are coming out of that decision. Is called the Rear Edge Management Plan or AMP Plan. And it is designed to forgive the debt of customers who are struggling to to make their. Payments and for. For electricity and and gas as well. And so that plan. Does provide for a certain amount of debt forgiveness for eligible customers. And CCA programs are eligible to participate. And I've been informed by the management that. The SD CP will be participating, so we will be providing a notice to SD Genie. The the benefit of participation is that. The forgiven debt will be collected through the public purpose program charge and redistributed to the utility and the CCA program. That participates. And so we'll be getting some sort of. Refer to as a remittance from SD Genie. For, you know, down the road for this debt forgiveness. Obviously, it will also help out low income customers and customers who are struggling to. To make their payments, which, you know, in in today's world with the pandemic. Is, you know, critically important that customers still have access to power. So we'll be moving forward with that notice. Finally, the financial security requirement. We. There has been a draft, I'm sorry, a final resolution was issued on this a little while back. We do have our financial security, new financial security requirement posting. Which is due on December eighth. And we'll be submitting an advice letter to the commission. This just notifying them of our compliance. We're anticipating the hundred and forty thousand, hundred and forty seven thousand dollar minimum to apply. We also did receive a a new calculation. Of our future obligation under the FSR. And we have some issues with it, so we'll be discussing that with SD Genie. Those calculations are confidential, so you know, don't want to discuss them here. But we certainly do have some issues that we want to take up around those calculations, so we'll be presenting that as well. So again, I ran through that pretty quickly and happy to happy to answer any questions or go back and explain things in a little bit more detail.
Yeah, as always, Ty, you've been very busy and there's a lot going on, so I I I thank you. And board members also have an opportunity to refer to the staff report where you've drilled down a bit more. But this is also an opportunity to ask questions of Ty, if you want to drill down on anything he's asked. And also for Bill and Cody to answer any questions that you guys have. All right, Megan, did we, do we have any public comments on item three?
Yes, we have one public comment and it's from Matthew Vassalaskis. Good afternoon, board members. On behalf of Climate Action Campaign, we are very concerned, though unsurprised. The SD G and E is manipulating the energy resource recovery account process. To create the illusion that their rates will be lower than SD CP's at launch next year. This is yet another example of SD G and E's aggressive actions to stimmy and undermine San Diego community power from having a successful launch. Instead of being an honest partner, they are wasting valuable SD CP time and resources on dead end efforts to kill community choice energy. We cannot let their profit motivations thwart our climate and clean energy goals. Our region is counting on the board's leadership to ensure a successful launch of SD CP. We urge the board to take a strong position and opposition opposition to SD Genie's antics and protect public power in our region. And that concludes public comment for item three.
All right, perfect. I'm going to bring it back to the board for any closing comments on item three. Not seeing any. Once, twice, I will move on to item number four. And item four is, hold on for one second. Item four is committee reports and first committee to report is Finance and Risk Committee. Is that Board Member West or?
That is Board Member West. So I I just want to say that. Matthew, I love that you are always here fighting for San Diego community power. You are, you are a good steward, my friend, so keep up the good work. And the entire Climate Action Campaign group is doing great. So the regular meeting and the finance risk meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November third, was canceled. Due to, we had a little national election going on, so. But we we held a special meeting on the on Thursday, November fifth. We discussed the the draft inclusion and sustainable workforce policy, which we had been, which have been brought to us by the Community Advisory Committee. And they had seen it before. The draft before you tonight includes the recommendations and changes which were approved by both. The CAC and our committee. The other item we discussed was a proposed feed in tariff program, which which is a really great program. I'm excited to see that coming. Suffolk Energy Advisors solicited feedback from. The board, Greg and I, and they'll be coming back to us with an actual program framework. At the next Finance Risk Management Committee meeting on December first. The board can expect to see that the following month after that. And as a reminder, the next FRMC meeting will actually be held on December first at three P M. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Director West? All right. And then we also have a report from the our Community Advisory Committee. And do we have. Their Chair Eddie, Chair Eddie Price reporting out or somebody from the CAC?
Yes, sir. Greetings, Board and Community Members. My name is Eddie Price and I'm the Chair of the, I don't know if I like it being called CAC, but the Community Advisory Committee.
Sorry.
And, you know, before I get started with my report and I don't, you know, I don't know how I missed this. But I would like to comment on the workforce policy and its use of the term communities of color. I I would personally prefer communities of concern, which is more inclusive of more communities. And communities of color kind of separates racially communities, but that's all I had to say on that. Since this is the first time I'm doing this, you know, give me a little latitude. We have non agenda public comment on November thirteenth at one P M. From Erica Morgan on the disadvantaged disadvantaged communities, green tariff and community solar green tariff tariff programs. With the due date of January first for CCAs to submit information to the CPUC. On taking advantage of these programs, we would like the staff, we would like to know what staff has done to ensure that we're taking full advantage of this program. As has been mentioned before on this, on this particular call and all calls before this, you know, there's a lot to be done, but we have to be vigilant on a lot of fronts. We also had a presentation from Ty Tostel. On the PCI. It was very informative and it you you appear as a board to be cognizant of everything that he's talking about. We had an update on the Community Member Communications Guide that Civilian has been working on. And it's a living document and it'll probably change as time moves on and they get more information or we give them more information. We also had a review and were able to provide input on a net energy metering policy. Calpine gave us a presentation on what the policy would look like to SD CP. We provided some feedback and believe this will come to your approval at next month's meeting. We're also able to provide input on the product names, which was rather exciting, actually. Civilian gave us a presentation on potential names. We reviewed them, liked the options presented to us and hope they found the way to your agenda today for approval. And we discussed potential agenda items. Further out, which will basically be the M, N E M three point O proceeding at the P U C to ensure that we have a voice there. With that, that's the conclusion of my presentation. I thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Chair Price, for for coming today and giving us some information on what you guys are up to on the Community Advisory Committee. You did a great job. I also want to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate you. For being selected as a clean energy champion for the inaugural cohort of recipients of the California Energy Commission's Clean Energy Hall of Fame Awards. In celebration of its forty fifth anniversary, the C E C, California Energy Commission, launched these Hall of Fame Awards to honor individuals and entities. Making exceptional contributions to help California achieve one hundred percent clean energy future for all. As you know, Eddie has been an important figure in the fight for climate equity in our region. From being a part of almost every climate group you can think of. The region towards the use of communities of concern. Our staff saw his contributions and wanted to elevate his platform by nominating him. We are very proud of of Chair Price and thank him for his hard work and making a positive difference in our region. And we are so very thankful that you're a part of our Community Advisory Committee because you bring so much value to this organization. So thank you, Chair Price.
Thank you very much.
And if any of my board colleagues would like to say anything, you're you're welcome to as well. Board Member West?
Yeah, um, Chair Price, I was so happy to hear that you got this. I I have to admit, it's hard for me to kind of like just articulate, just being really excited about it. Because I know you have been as. As a city that has many people that are in a, it's a city of community of concern. We have many people that need help and you have been leading the charge for, oh my God, so long. So I'm really proud of you, brother. You did a great job and keep up the good work, man. We we need people like you out there all the time. So thanks.
Be careful what you pray for there, young man.
I'm good with it. I'm good.
Board Member Montgomery, Steve?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I just, you stole my thunder, so I ditto what you said. And I really want to thank Mr. Price for all of his advocacy. And I I think that I, we can credit him for even convincing me to be a part of this board. And so he's he's very persistent and this is probably one of the better things that. I have been able to do as as a as a council member in board member of this group. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Price for everything that that he is doing. And also just remind you all that he is my constituent. Thanks.
It's Bill?
Yes, Board Member Baber.
Eddie, I don't know that many people in the Hall of Fame. Congrats, dude. Are they going to give you like a gold jacket like the NFL Hall of Fame, Eddie?
I hope so. Anaphodora, I hope.
I'm telling you, if you don't get a gold jacket, we should get you one because that's what a Hall of Fame person's supposed to wear.
Thank you.
Anyway, Eddie, yeah, I'm proud of you, man. Thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you.
All right, Megan, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Well, thank you, Eddie, for the report and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next item, which is item number five, discussion of near term launch tasks and schedules. And I assume this is our our interim CEO, Bill Carnahan or Cody, our CEO?
Cody.
All right.
Okay. This item is, yeah, your near term launch. So the reason we wanted to share this with you all is, there's a, I mentioned this on the previous item. There's a whole slew of items and decisions that will be coming to you over the next few months as we prepare for launch. We're launching in four months, or I guess maybe three months, depending on how you count this. And that is feels like next week. So we want to make sure that we just in this moment, give you a heads up of all the items coming. There's obviously a few on the agenda for tonight. And just prepare you for the bigger picture of how all these pieces fit together. We've been working really closely with Calpine, who has been just a fantastic partner to have. How they function often as as just extension of staff for us. And helping us to just organize with all the steps. And with all of our other, we have a pretty fantastic team of consultants and they've all been helping us keep all this organized and making sure we're we're setting up all these dominoes to to line up perfectly. So we broke them out. We thought it'd be helpful to break them out. And really, again, this is focused over a very near term. This is the next two or three months of time. And we broke them out by a different category. So policies is one area that we we brought up here. And this is just a several of the few that we're bringing forward to you that all fit in with, as we launch service. We want to either make sure we have the programs in place that our customers are going to be expecting. Or we have other policies that underline the things that we're doing, such as the customer data confidentiality. Or the one that's on the agenda for tonight, inclusive and sustainable workforce policy. Another two that are really programmed, customer facing is the net energy metering and feed in tariff. And so you'll see those coming forward to you and we've already been doing a lot of stakeholder engagements on these items.
Cody, when we talk about programs, are we going to? I know that that, you know, we're rightly so, we're we're focused on the nuts and bolts of of picking up this organization and launching. But I think certainly, you know, a lot of us have talked about. Programs that are tailored to our communities and this is really a way to show value. Are we going to have, are we going to have a program manager on staff? And when do you think that we would be hiring a program manager? Where she or he is able to 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 really help us understand not only how we can use our own rate payer dollars. But perhaps if there are other dollars out there that we're able to to utilize toward launching programs that would help specifically our customers.
Yeah, and Bill, feel free to chime in if you'd like. We were constantly juggling. It seems that we need, you know, ten staff today to do all the the things we want to do. A staff person to manage programs is in our wish list of near term. And there's some that we can do now with the people that we have on board. So for example, net energy metering and feed in tariffs are both community facing programs. And that we can do right away. I think towards the end of the fiscal year, as we're, we get past the actual launch date itself and get the first wave underway. Bringing in more staff that can start to apply for state funding and really administer and manage those programs and develop them out into what they should be for our communities. It's something Bill and I, excuse me, have talked about recently and Sebastian. And we're super excited to move forward in those and there's money available out there before we even have to use our own, so.
Yeah, I mean, even when we, when we talk about, you know, a lot of, a lot of people often bring up with to me, you know. My bill is so high and all this money is going toward public purpose. You know, programs. And so really trying to even look at that and is is there a way that that we're able to. Focus that in a way that's really crafted toward, you know, Encinitas, La Mesa and and San Diego, crafted toward our cities. So that we have somebody on board looking at that and making sure the programs are right size for us.
Yeah, don't forget, don't forget little I B, by the way.
I B as well, absolutely.
I might just chime in that, you know, that's, that's really fairly high on our list. Because if we were able to take. Custody and control and direction of some of those funds, those are funds that are the existing customers are paying today. We just want the opportunity to be able to self direct those funds to our members. For programs and activities that that better fit our needs. And so some couple of CCAs have done that. You know, I think I mentioned to you that's very high on my list. You know, so so that that's a great way to kickstart that effort. Because, you know, the money is already there. We just need to allocate it where it's best needed and that's for our customers too.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that funding is available and as soon as we start manage that, I think that's a great opportunity for us.
Thank you.
And also, also, let me just add real quickly, also in terms of a person onboard to manage programs. That's in our first wave as well and we hope to. Uh, that's in our first wave as well and we hope to have that uh, filled very soon.
Yeah, I, I bring it up just because I, when I, when I think about it, I mean, it is, it's such a, a large area that it, I mean, I, I don't think that many people can understand the complexity. And the vastness of, of some of, of the area in which a program manager would be looking at all the different. Programs and funding possibilities. Uh, so it, it really is not, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a team of people. Uh, but certainly starting with one person who's dedicated that and understands that and comes from it.
We hear you.
Great. I'll keep going, but feel free to interrupt with questions at any time. The next uh, area is power products and rates. And this one, uh, we, we've been talking a little bit about this um, tonight. Uh, that the, some of the decisions we have to, in order to set our rates, we have to wait for decisions. Uh, that come out of the CPUC and that the timing is really such that they provide that so late. Um, the year, we're just getting draft information now and, and won't get final information until, excuse me, um. December and, and January and, you know, there's holidays in there and we have to crunch all the numbers and put together information for your board. Um, so we're working on that now and we'll have to be presenting to you um. Both preliminary and final rate settings. So, you'll see that over the next few months. And that is where uh, Civic Energy Advisors will come in with our other team of consultants who are doing the. Analysis on the regulatory side and, and pull all that information together and synthesize it into a draft rate setting for you all. Um, imagine that'll be um, very interesting meetings for us. Um, over the next two months. Um, and then also product offerings and names. And so that's actually on the agenda for tonight. So, you, if you recall, we've talked often about having. Some sort of default product, it's called, right? If everybody defaults into some category and then there's an opt up product. Um, and we don't necessarily have to define the details of that tonight, but we're gonna get to hear from Civilian and, and pick names for those different products.
And, uh, we just mentioned, uh, Cody, in terms, it, to emphasize that on the rate setting part, you know, all of that's gonna come together very quickly. You know, it, it's, we, we have to get certain information to be able to have P E A do that for us, do the performers and. All the things associated with that and that's all gonna be very compressed. Uh, simply because the first bit of information that comes out isn't gonna be available until January. So, uh. Uh, it's not that we're, we're not anxious to do it. It's just we don't have all the tools yet to do it and when it happens, it's gonna happen fast. So.
Yeah, and a lot of things aren't on this list, but if, if we had bulleted out all the steps we're taking, it would be hundreds of bullet points long where.
Yeah.
We have to know names of products so that we could print materials and we could write scripts for the call centers. They know what to say to customers who are gonna start calling and. So, all these things are kind of sequential. We're just putting those, these big items in front of you.
Does that mean that we could, we'll start off with fifty percent uh, for our, our default product, but that we could potentially. Uh, in this kind of um, um, information gathering and, and just kind of checking in with the market that we could see potentially. Higher than fifty percent or are we basically set that fifty percent is what is our, our, our default product's gonna be?
Well, in my opinion, uh. It, it is a very high probability that that, it will stay the same. Uh, we, of course, we'll be taking, we'll be looking for opportunities to increase that. Because that's really what we're all about. Uh, but I don't feel real confident with the state of affairs, the way they are, that uh. We're gonna be able to improve on that much this go around. But I could be wrong. I hope I'm wrong.
In the absence of that, Bill, uh, would, I, I, I've brought this up before and, and uh, maybe I've gotten an answer, but. Uh, in terms of just kind of, um, when you look at some of the states' kind of uh, legislation and you see, okay, uh, the, the IOUs have to, to. Uh, and even the municipal, municipally owned utilities have to reach a certain amount of renewable energy at a certain time. Um, and, and knowing that, that uh, two of our member cities, I B and, and Encinitas are one hundred percent at twenty thirty. And the others at twenty thirty-five. Are we gonna start to kind of, uh, are we gonna have, okay, the default's fifty percent, but here's our schedule.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a schedule that says this is the way we're gonna get to one hundred percent at twenty thirty-five.
Yes, we're actually required to meet those milestones. Uh, it, it's ramped up and so, yes, we will always keep our eye on, on the ramp.
Well, we're, we're required by state law uh, to meet the, the state law ones, but obviously we're um, ten years ahead of state law. So then we would have, at some point, we would have an internal policy of how we, that step process of getting there. Okay.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I asked for this um, a couple, about a month ago, that we slayed out our CACs and. Based on each one of them that we could see something, and I think it'd be a really good. It might be really good to put our marketing team on this to really lay that out so we can show that to the public because it would really be an effective way. This is how we're going to a hundred percent renewable energy and this is, this, so we can actually provide this to people. So, I'd like to really. You know, I asked for that to, to see it, so it's really tangible and how we're meeting these goals to get there.
Great. And I think actually we did pull that together. Sebastian might have, I looked at all the cities' climate action plans and talked to the staff and have all those numbers. And, and we know the target dates for the climate action plans and twenty thirty is the early date. Um, what we don't want to do is set something where we, if we can afford to get there sooner, we don't want to cut ourselves short that way, but um. But we'll, we'll pull that information together and, and start using that publicly. Um, okay, uh, and then the last one in this section is uh, member city defaults. So, uh, we want to provide some guidance. And again, we know especially some of us who work in cities of what uh, tight timelines it takes to get onto city council agendas. Um, and if cities are gonna de, if our five member cities are gonna default into anything other than the default product, so if they want to opt up their, their. Municipal accounts or their entire jurisdiction, we laid out in this report um, some steps in order to do that. And again, recognizing the timeline is very tight um, um, through just the, the nature of the regulatory arena. Um, we walked through some of those steps here and, and figured out a way to have a secondary um, approach. So, if you can't make that decision. Uh, by December seventeenth, which I know if I do that in our city, that might be impossible to get to a city council meeting by then. Um, which is when we need to know the default rates. Then we provided a, uh, some steps here that would allow for a secondary option. Um, to default higher uh, than the, the base product um, for the second phase of, of enrollment. I won't go through it because it's just a step by step kind of process, but it is laid out here and I'm happy to, to talk that through with anybody or. We've also reached out to your staff members to let them know of the process.
So, if, if a city uh, was, was not going to um, ask for any of their customer classes to be beyond fifty percent, they wouldn't have to. Um, have this on their agenda as, you know, and we wouldn't need a resolution from one of the member cities if they, if they were just gonna be at fifty percent?
We, we believe that's true from our uh, perspective. You, each city council already voted to join um, S D C P, so they've already taken that action. Um, but if, uh, it's up to you, if you, if you feel comfortable or prefer to take some sort of city council action. Um, that's, that's your choice, but as far as requirements to just be in the defaults, we don't think that's necessary.
Right.
And if anybody, Ryan or Bill, if you.
Although it may be, it may be, it may be an op, I, I'm sure Civilian, if they're on the line, they probably would say that it's probably an opportunity to get in front of uh. In front of city councils and, and.
Right.
Got some customers are watching.
Yeah, and we, we did talk to your member city staff about that. We think that's a great thing to do no matter what. Um, we'd like to get in front of all of your city councils and share kind of the enrollment phase and what we're doing, what we're up to, but as far as an actual. Action necessary in the timeline that we have, we want to make sure that was clear to folks what they did or didn't need to do.
So, um, Cody, it's Bill. Um, first of all, I do want to have you come to uh, um, La Mesa sometime in the first quarter. But even if we don't vote to default up, each of our citizens can make that choice still, correct?
Yeah.
That's, that's true.
Okay.
And each of your municipal, as a, as a, for your own accounts, for your own city accounts, you could also make that choice and say, you know, I want my. At least my city can walk the talk for our climate action plan or whatever you need to do. You could opt up your own accounts um, as well. Uh, so yeah, everybody has that, that control and that choice.
I don't think we could organize it by December seventeenth. Um.
Yeah, I know.
But you're, the way I'm reading this is if we don't, we still have another shot to do it by April one?
Yes.
Okay. So, for La Mesa, why don't we make a tentative target to uh. Um, have that before the council, before April one, so we can make that, some of those choices, okay?
Great. Okay, and we will work with your staff on that. Perfect. Okay, I'm gonna carry on. I'll see if you hear anything else. Uh, customers and marketing is the next category. So, really complimentary to. Power and rates is our customer. That's our, our revenue source and who we want to um, keep and, and retain. And so dozens of tasks within this area um, that are critical to ensuring a smooth launch. Um, and some of those, just, just a few of those include just finalizing our, our customers. Um, in, in each phase of enrollment because that will allow us to know exactly who we need to send. Um, notice, notices to that they will be enrolled. Um, and that, that's the work I mentioned earlier. We're working closely with S D Genie on that. Um, launching our brand identity and our new website um, with additional functionality. So, this. New website will allow customers to go and, and uh, we hope if they do come to our website. What is to read about us, that the functionality is, allows them to opt up and access their account information. Um, but of course, they can also opt out and we want to make sure that functionality is available for them, um, should they choose to. Um, and along that lines, uh, key uh, account outreach. So, we will have some. Um, we're calling them quasi municipal accounts in the earlier phases and we want to make sure, and commercial industrial accounts as well. And we want to make sure that we, excuse me, um, do some critical outreach with them and make sure they know what's happening and. Especially bigger accounts or any early uh, folks to understand what, what um, is coming and how we can help them and why we hope that they stay with us. Um, and then.
And that, and that's part of our, is that, that's part of the second phase uh, where we would uh, C and I customers um, that we would be launching. Um, so do we anticipate hiring folks that would um, be assigned to those? Um, actually, I don't even know how many uh, commercial industrial customers we have. Um, but um. I, I, I assume it's, it's, it's a, it's a good amount that we would actually hire folks that, that would. Uh, be responsible for working with those uh, customers, uh, large customers to, to make sure that their needs are met.
Yeah, we actually have consulted with the, with Calpine in terms of what was the experience of. Other CCAs in terms of staffing that effort and they actually responded back with a, but the ta, table today, I think. I, I saw it today. I don't know if it came in today, but. I saw it. So, they, we're relying on them to give us some guidance as to how quickly we need to staff up and how many we need. You know, uh, based upon the experience from others. So, yes, we're preparing for that as well. Because they need training and we need to get them aboard. So, so we've been addressing that right now.
Just kind of, as a, a, kind of a nerd sometimes, Cody, uh, not you, me. Uh, I would love, I would love to get some. Uh, you, it's probably already out there, but just some uh, uh, data on, on the breakdown of our customers, uh, C and I customers and. Municipal accounts and, 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 and residential accounts. How many are they? Uh, and also just the, the usage, energy usage of them?
Can do that, that, that's easy to do.
And I think it's important too that, that we, that these, these people that we're hiring, they need to establish a, a. A rapport with each one of these C and R accounts because it's important for them to have that, to have that relationship and, and to work off each other. So. This is, yeah, these, these are great topics that we're talking about. So, I think uh. Getting those people that are gonna be well versed in each one of those C and R accounts is really important.
Mm-hmm. Um, I also have regulatory, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't finish the last one there. Enrollment notices. Again, it seems fairly small, but it requires. Uh, bring on vendors, uh, preparing all the information that needs to be put in those materials and making sure it's a hundred percent accurate. Um, and, and um, uh, sending out those notices and making sure we have the right answers, et cetera. So, it's a lot of. Uh, tedious, but very important work to engage our customers. The first kind of time we hit them with information. And writing.
Do we send, um, is this an insert in the S D Genie bill or is this a separate mailing?
You know, I don't know. I don't know, Sebastian, you uh, have input on that or if we've sorted that out yet or not.
You can always get back to me.
I, I believe that's a separate mailing. Um.
Yeah. Yeah, so two before ser, services uh, delivered and two after. We have to give four notices. Uh, directly to the customers on their options and what's going on. So, that's a requirement of the law.
Right, so that's actually a ginormous task. Uh, or Member Baber?
Um, Cody, uh, when did, would you think the first notice would go out to anybody in any of our cities or in La Mesa in particular? Ballpark?
We're target, Sebastian, I think you're ready to give me the exact date, but we're targeting the January.
January eighteenth or something like that.
Okay, here's sort of the culture of La Mesa. If those notices go out. And we haven't even sort of uh, brought them to the city and got our city staff caught up and. Uh, people will start calling their other council members and create confusion. So. Uh, if we're, if those notices are going out in January, we need to have you come to the city council like the first week of January and just say, okay, these notices are going out. This is what they're gonna look like because we've gotta mitigate the confusion.
Are those notices specific to the class, uh, the customer class or, I mean, or, so we wouldn't be sending out, like for instance. Um, if, if we're not, um, if we're not launching our residential customers until the beginning of twenty twenty-two, why would we be noticing?
It's, it's by the customers per, per.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but I don't, for example, know the pool of commercial customers will get the first list, like if it's. Seven P, if it's seven entities, I can manage it. If it's eighty, I think I need to have you come and do an explanation to the city beforehand.
Yeah.
I think it's only Muni though. The, the first launch is municipal accounts.
Is that true, Cody?
Municipal and there's some uh, kind of, we're calling them quasi municipal, so a few school districts and other types. It's about forty-five customers in the first enrollment. Um, so we're managing either by individual outreach or by working through you all, but, but. Mister Baber, to your point, I believe that we can um, work to present as early as possible to city council because it's.
Is that? Cody, is that forty-five for all five cities or just La Mesa?
Yeah, actually, I think it's fifty, including the five cities. So, it's, it's fifty customers total in the first phase so far.
Of, oh, when you put our whole service area, it's only fifty.
But, but it, that's the number of customers, but some of those customers, like a city, might have fifty meters or a hundred meters, right?
Yeah.
We're not talking.
Okay.
Meters, but it's.
So, to Joe's point, maybe my initial cons, we still need to do something, but my initial concern is. Before it goes out to say the commercial customers, we need to have a, we need to be at the city council and start the P R campaign, okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, and then repetitive with every, with every um, launch, we should have strategy uh, with every launch. You know, we shouldn't assume that anything we're doing, you know, one month is gonna be something that, that's gonna uh, be okay for the next launch. We should be consistently out there before we are sending out letters, before we are launching uh, communicating with our customers.
And it, it, it wouldn't hurt for us to, to go before your city council, just to let them know what we're doing. Uh, they'll forget about us after a while. You have some new council members coming on, et cetera. And so periodically in, in timing and with these launches is not a bad idea for just to. For us to re, take fifteen minutes at your council meeting, let them know what we're doing, you know, overall.
So, we, uh, Civilian, I believe, is listening in and they're probably chomping at the bit because they're working on a whole strategy for how to make sure all this is happening and this is great feedback for them. And so, thank you for that. Um, the other, the next one is uh, regulatory and I will actually not even go through this again. Because we've been through regulatory items multiple times now tonight, but nonetheless, they're hugely and critically important. Um, to our operations and um, and everything that we're doing. So, we've been heavily engaged there and will continue to be. Excuse me. Um, and then the last uh, category that we created was administrative and financial. So, really uh, making sure that we're sharing with the board. Um, all of just some of the housekeeping information. What is our um, you know, budget to actuals reports on our startup funding and, and go forward beyond that? Um, what are we paying that are various discretionary, excuse me, non-discretionary fees? We, we have a little bit of that on the agenda tonight. You all approve the payment of the financial security requirements and other fees that we're paying. Um, we also need to be keeping our bank up to date on what we're doing and our planned launch and all that. So, anything we share with them, we will share with you first. Um, and then as has come up several times tonight, hiring uh, critical staff. This is a tremendous undertaking and, and we need. Uh, bodies committed to our organization to, to move this forward. So, we're, we're working on all that and we'll continue to keep you updated there as well. So, hopefully that was helpful just to give you a lay of the land over just the next few months and, and all the work that we're, we're working on with. Our team of consultants and, and folks you see here.
Uh, mine just mentioned on the financial part, our intent is to take a monthly roll up. Report on our finances, budgeting to the, to the finance or risk management committee every month. And then, of course, if they see anything or want to comment on anything, they can do that under their committee reports to the board. And then with the board, we will probably do quarterly, uh, quarterly agenda item that would talk, talk about the. You know, what we see and where we are and that sort of thing. So, we can begin to, to really, everybody have a feel for where we are on the budget because. The, the budget's gonna go up exponentially when we start delivering. The, the budget's going to go up exponentially when we start delivering the order, order of magnitude in terms of the dollar. So. Uh, we, we want to make sure we have a system in place so that everybody knows what, what's happening and, 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 uh, to feel comfortable with it.
And the report, thank you.
All right. Um, thank you Cody and Bill. Um, any, um, any questions for Cody or Bill? Megan, do we have any comments on item number five?
We do not.
All right. Well, this is a receive and file. Uh, so if there aren't any questions or comments, I will, will receive and file this and move on to the next item. Next item is, uh, item number six, approval of STCP product names. And, um, is this civilian or?
Yes, Sean.
Sean?
At your Moscow, folks on the board. Yeah, hey, great to see you. Um, you, you were correct, Cody. I was chomping at the bit on mute, uh, as that, as that conversation happened moments ago. Um, so just took a couple of notes as we went through here. Um. Uh, Director West, uh, one of our primary messages for the platform for STCP is a, a proven track record and a clear path to one hundred percent renewable energy. So. I wrote that down. I love the idea of doing some sort of visual that kind of plots out what the process looks like. Um, we'll have to figure out kind of how exactly the best way to visualize that, but, um, that's a great suggestion there. And then for both Chair Mosca. And Councilmember Baber, um, we absolutely will be reaching out. Uh, we're already coordinating, uh, through, through STCP staff with the city staff. Uh, and figuring out the right times to get in front of those city council meetings. We've developed a community outreach and partnership. Um, relations, a plan that really kind of looks at our, our main tent poles of the rollout. Uh, the phase one being municipal with quasi governmental, phase two being commercial and phase three being residential. And we're kind of looking at those as our tent poles throughout the next twelve, eighteen months. And we're arranging not just our marketing and advertising, but also our community outreach and engagement. To really build a crescendo leading into those key periods. So that by the time, you know, folks are making their decisions, whether they're business owners or residential. Um, they're hearing about this in public discourse and they've hopefully, they're aware of our brand and they're aware of what we're all about. So it's a, it's a smoother decision for them to make.
John, on that point, um, how, how are you using some of the information and data, um, that, that's coming from Calpine? Um, in terms of opt-out? And then what else are you, um, doing, uh, in terms of understanding? How we, um, ensure that we have the lowest opt-out rate possible? Are you. Working with other CCEs across the state to see, uh, what they did? Um, just, uh, can it give us a little bit of information on that? Cause obviously that's of, of, of really incredible importance.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, uh, thanks to Sebastian and Cody, um, we've gotten our, uh, we've gotten our, our eyes on a lot of the Cal CCA data that's out there. Um, do's and don'ts from other CCEs as they, that they rolled out over time. So we definitely, we lever, we leverage that data. Um, also through one of Calpine subcontractors, they have a research firm onboard that's going to be doing custom surveys to. Specific, um, customers here in this region to understand kind of what their main triggers and decision points are going to be. And is it all about cost? Is it about the environment? Is it about keeping up with the Joneses and my neighbors? What, what type of messaging is going to most appeal to them? Um, to A, be reassured and build confidence and trust with this new entity as it rolls out, but then B, um, not want to opt out. So. Uh, we have a lot of research going on, uh, new, new fielded research from the Sea Change Institute, but also. Historical knowledge and then a lot of marketing and advertising best practices and community involvement. Um, working with the cities, working with CBOs, working with stakeholder organizations. Um, we're setting up a series of briefings and meetings right now. Um, and then as we get into Q1, those are just going to really pick up, um, in pace. That's your question, Chair?
Yeah, that answered my question. Thank you.
If I may add a little bit to that, um, uh, Chair Moscow, uh, another, another aspect of. Decreasing the likelihood of opt-outs is, uh, making sure that as, as we work with civilian and. Our technical team that, uh, we ensure that customers understand their bill. Um, much more clearly than they have with other CCA, uh, community charge programs. And that is because oftentimes, uh, they fall into the misconception that, uh, we end up, they think of, uh, the CCA charge as an added charge. On their IOU bill and, and we were working internally to make sure that that distinction is made, that, that we're replacing, not adding to. To the SDGini bill and, and from the research that the Sea Change Institute that Sean mentioned has done, that is a big component of opt-outs. Uh, and one that, uh, we're looking at very closely.
Great, thank you.
Should we go into the naming presentation?
Yeah, let's, let's, uh, let's, uh, charge forward with item six.
Terrific. Um, so we've, we've started to build out our brand identity. As, as Cody mentioned, we have the website in development, all kinds of marketing materials, outreach happening. Um, we also know that rates are going to be set in the next couple of months here. We want to make sure. That as we go to market, there are tangible products that we can, uh, have named and have rolling out in the market. So just a couple, couple of quick slides here. To get us through to our recommendation. Um, as always, we look at category research. So we looked at all the other CCAs that are out there statewide. And try to identify trends and observations that we can apply to our approach to this naming system. Um, and I say system, because as you'll see throughout this side of the next slide, there are, there are definitely systems that you CCAs have tried to create. Um, I would argue some maybe more successful than others. Um, you know, some of them are very, uh, choice-based. You see Apple Valley and Lancaster right there. Um, I do kind of like Lancaster's, uh, system where they have clear, smart and personal choice. So. Um, each of them kind of speaks to something a little bit differently, but they clearly are part of a system. Um, if we go onto the next slide, um, everything you saw on the previous slide, they included kind of visual treatments. And then these CCAs. Just have product names. They don't have a, a dedicated logo, a versioned logo for that. It's just the name itself that kind of exists on its own. Um, and some of these CCAs, uh, I think they, some of them you see like, for example, in Peninsula, um, they, they introduced this idea of eco. Uh, which obviously is, is category appropriate, but I would argue from a brand standpoint, it, it introduces a new variable that isn't quite intuitive. So again, things that we take from this, things that we learn, things we want to apply. To STCP. Um, you see a lot of green, you see, I see a lot of power. Um, you know, Solana or folks, our folks up north on, on the beach, they're all about the sea. Um, so again, as we look at these and, and we kind of drew out on the next slide, a couple of, uh, observations that we're going to apply here is. It's better to be functional than descriptive. Um, and we say that for a few reasons. Uh, number one, we don't have pure, like, like full. Confirmation yet of what the rate's going to be, both in terms of the specific, um, clean energy rate and then the specific, um. Carbon-free percentage of that. And, and that may somewhat change over time. So like, what I say is, we don't want to be locked in to a specific. We don't want to be so descriptive that a name only works for a very specific, um, percentage of clean energy. Um, we want these to be functional. We want them to make sense. We want them to be intuitive. Um, we want them to be simple rather than complex. A lot of those terms out there. Um, are introducing new language and there's kind of a lot of different variables at play. We want to keep this very straightforward, because again. We all recognize that when it comes to energy, it's not something that folks are thinking about. On a daily basis, as much as everyone on this call lives and breathes it, uh, every day. Um, it's something that folks in the, in the real world are not aware of and, um, you know, we want to give them again, a sense of trust. Um, and we want to support the brand rather than diluted. When I mentioned earlier, when some of the. Other CCAs are introducing new terminology and it seems like they're creating a new thing, it kind of dilutes their brand instead of reinforcing it and supporting it. We can only launch this thing once. We only get one first impression. So we want to make sure that everything from the, the brand name and the logo itself through the product suite. All makes intuitive sense and falls right into that same family. So, um, when I say support the brand, as always, on the next slide, we look at our brand attributes. This is what guides our recommendations. If what we present to you today does not deliver proud, trustworthy, fresh, local visionary, then we have failed. And I want you to call us out on that, if that's the case. Uh, cause that's our goal here. Um, so again, uh, um, two slides away from introducing the names themselves. The next slide is just a reminder of what our core brand logo looks like. San Diego Community Power. When we, when we pitched the systems to the STCP staff, uh, we shared three different versions. They've evolved. The folks at the CAC, Eddie and team have, have provided some great recommendations, one of which is actually, um, on our recommendation, which we'll talk about, but. Um, we know that at rollout, there are only going to be two different programs. There's the defaults and then there's the premium opt-up. But that said, we know in the future, there will be more, more programs that are introduced, um, different levels of clean energy, different levels of carbon-free energy. Um, programs, solar, wind, maybe commercial. There's a lot of different options that are out there that grow over time. And so. When we present the system, we want to look at it with proof of concept that kind of shows off how this thing can extend in the future. So. You're, you're going to see on the next slide, two names that we want to roll out with and then additional names that we can use over time. So for initial rollout, San Diego Community Power, Power On, Powerful. So Power On is our fifty percent default, Powerful is a one hundred percent opt-up. Proof of concept names for input, Power Plus, Power Up, Power Partner, Power Pro. Uh, we can continue to build these out ag- again over time, but, um, these to us, obviously the use of power is right on brand. Um, they are simple, they're intuitive, they, they work relative to one another. Power On being the base level, Powerful being an upgrade to that. Um, we feel relationship with each other and then relationship with the brand is striking the right balance. Would love to hear any questions or comments from, from the board.
Sean, um, so. So you're saying that the powerful is like, that's a, a hundred percent. Is that, is that how I understand it?
That would be the opt-up, the hundred percent, I think, uh, Sebastian, correct me. I don't know, we, we don't have finals yet, but I don't know what. Carbon-free rate that would be, but it's, it's a hundred percent clean energy.
Yeah, it'd be a clean product.
So I have to admit, I think, um, I like the power on. And I almost, I, I kind of like the idea of trying to put hundred, one hundred in there is what, on the powerful. Instead of powerful, maybe one hundred percent power. And then people know that they're, they're getting that. A hundred, I mean, it's easy.
Yeah.
I, I'm afraid that the powerful is going to be like. What does that really mean? You know, and I, I, I kind of like, I agree with you that the eco one hundred, I didn't like, because what, what does that mean eco? But I like the idea of putting a hundred percent. I don't know. I, I'm throwing it out there to the rest of my board members for their thoughts, but I think. I like things that are simple and I think if I can say a hundred percent power. Or something like that, then we, then they know they're getting a hundred percent renewable energy.
I mean, I, I like, I like what Director West is saying. And, and then I just go back to what you were saying, Sean. Um, it sounded like you were, um, uh. Uh, designing that powerful, uh, in a way, uh, to kind of be a catch-all for, you know, in cases board. Um, because we haven't necessarily made some decisions about that. So if it was, um, so, uh, does. Doing, saying what Mark, uh, Director West is saying, is that just kind of lock it boxing you in? Is that why you're, you're saying like one hundred percent would be like, okay. I'm getting one hundred percent, uh, renewable energy.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good point. And where we. Where we didn't go with a hundred on this one, and again, this is all a dialogue, a good conversation for us to have, is. I think in the future, down the road, there very well may be a new product that is not only one hundred percent clean energy, but also. More carbon-free. So there, there may be more than one, one hundred percent clean energy products that we introduce over time. There may be a cream of the crop product that is, you know, fully, you know, fully clean, fully carbon, fully carbon-free. Um, but again, that's, that doesn't exist right now. We have what's in front of us right now. Um, and, and the thought would be giving ourselves a little bit of leeway relative to the other tiers. And, and that's why we, that's why we didn't include any numbers on this.
I wonder if you could put like, if you were to go to the next level, you could almost put like. A hundred percent power. And then if we get to another one, you can always put plus or, I don't know. I mean. You know, something, something simple. I just don't think that this is for. My community is going to understand exactly what that, it doesn't, it doesn't. Immediately say this is what I want to do. Cause I, I, I know me. I don't read everything that I get in my mail. I open it up and I'll go, this is what I want. And then I, I just kind of go with it and. I'm a lot like a lot of other people. So I think if it, if it's easy to see. And it's, that may be easier for the average person to make the decision. And then we can, you, I think we can figure out some things. Maybe we don't change the name of a completely, when we bring up to a next level, but we, we make an addition on to a hundred percent power plus or a hundred percent. Power negative for, for taking out all carbon or something like that. I, I don't, I, I, I am not a huge fan of the powerful.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, uh, Vice Chair Padia.
I always, I always love and hate these conversations because. It's like, I always want to have a policy that says somebody else is like this. I mean, I just, it's just so, because it's so subjective, right? And everybody brings something different. But I, I, I have to, I hear my brother Mark over there and he's got a good point. It's got to connect to something people understand, right? The value of what they're getting or paying for. Maybe you just dump the word full and puts, put a number in there or make it power one hundred or something or one hundred percent or not. People go, oh, what is, you know, a hundred is what they, they focus in. I want my buying a hundred percent of. Yeah, renewable. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm open to kicking it around, but at some point, um. Make it, get it over quick, because it's painful. I hate these discussions.
What else? So that's, so, so the, the feedback.
I, I, I thought, so I'm, 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 so I'm thinking that, that, that when we launch, the, the premium is the, the, the. I mean, it is the premium. It is the, 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 the most that we can do in terms of renewable energy. Uh, and then, then anything that comes after, you know, it's, it's kind of like that we're, that, um. I guess that we're, we're paring down, um, and not necessarily going beyond one hundred percent renewable, but that we're paring down to like, okay. This is, you know, um, this is, um, uh, uh, greenhouse gas-free or something like that. It, you know, it's, it's. Uh, I guess it, it, this is the, the fifty percent, but then the, the. Powerful would be the ultimate one hundred percent of, of, of legitimate renewable energy. Uh, and there, you know, uh, and so, uh, yeah, I guess I, 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 I guess I see what you're trying to get at in terms of the flexibility. Um, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just thinking that, that anything that comes after it is just below that.
Why don't we call it power premium then?
But still like, um, yeah, I mean. It sounds almost like, uh, 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 you know, like going to the gas station or power premium.
It's power, I'm, I'm with Mark. Powerful doesn't communicate anything to me.
Power, what's that? I like that power up below there. The power up is good too, but again, it doesn't, um. You know, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna spend that premium amount, um, and you're getting one hundred percent, I want to tell you, you're getting one hundred percent. I want you to know that right, right off the bat.
I like that power number.
Power one hundred?
Power one hundred, period. Clean, sleek, simple.
Yeah, it says what it is.
Concur.
So I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I am too.
Um, I just wanted to, to chime in and, and, uh. Due to the series of steps that we need to take, uh, for January eighteenth, um, if there's a consensus on the board to have the premium product be power one hundred, then. Uh, my recommendation would be to, uh, act on that today, uh, so staff can, can move forward with, with those two names.
Alright.
I think, I think we have a consensus. All we need is, all we need is, uh.
Yeah.
Director Montgomery's step to say yes as well. We have a consensus.
Yeah, I, 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 I tend to agree with, with you. Um, I do also kind of like power up. Um, but it still doesn't, um. I, I guess like the chair said, we want people to know that that's what they're getting. Um, and we want to communicate that on the spot. And so I agree, um. So there's consensus. I'll leave it at that. I'm, I'm like, uh, Director Padia, I really don't like these conversations.
And. And the other thing is that most of the time, like, but for perhaps like Encinitas or IB that decides, because I mean, I, I say, I isolate those two cities only because those are the two cities so far. That's, they have talked about, you know, having a resolution passed by their city councils to default to one hundred. Beyond IB and, and, uh, Encinitas, if you're, if you're in the city of San Diego or Tula Vista and, and how are we going to talk you into? Um, moving up to one hundred percent. Uh, and so it's going to be because you believe in that one hundred percent because of the default. Um, uh, the, the default, uh, rate, uh, to the IOU is not going to be there. So it, cause it's going to be a premium, uh, amount. And so you want to say. It's one hundred percent. And so then you're linking that, that person with the values that, that really wants to be at one hundred percent.
Yeah, it, it, it definitely should spark pride. There's no question there. You, you should want folks to aspire to the, to the premium product. Um, each of these would. They would appear in the context of others. So you, you wouldn't often see power, power one hundred or powerful or power plus or power up without. Juxtaposing it to power on, right? Cause that's sort of the base product. But again, you know, marketers, we like to, we like to make things very, you know. Similar and streamlined, but the most important thing is clarity. I mean, if, if we're not clear, then, then we're not going to, we're not going to get those opt-ups. We're not going to win that battle. So, um, you know. Our power one hundred works. It, it says what it needs to say.
Alright, did, did, were you going to present any other, um, did you say you were going to present other names or?
No, this was, this was far and away the, the system that was most, uh, favored. Yeah.
Alright, um, so do we need, um? All right, so do we need, I don't know if this is, this question's for Ryan or for Bill. Carnahan, do we need a motion on this, or, or it sounds like we have comfortable consensus here?
I guess I would probably defer to Ryan, I, 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 you, you could, it was certainly show support from the board, that, that, that's your choice. I don't think it would hurt anything if you wanted to do that, but I'm not sure that it's required.
Mark, did you want to make a motion? Or member West?
Yeah, sorry about that, I will make a motion for power 100.
So it's going to be power on for the 50% default, and then power 100 for the premium, is that what your motion is?
Yes.
Do we have a second in that?
I'll second it, Bill Baber.
Board member, or Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
100. That's a yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes, and I, I apologize, Megan, I didn't ask you if there were any public comments, but I.
That's okay, there was, there was no public comments.
All right, perfect.
We do have one for item seven, though.
All right, thank you.
And the motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, Sean, was there anything else on your presentation?
No, thank you, everyone, I, I do want to give a shout out to Chair Price of the CAC, for those of you who like the term power up, that was their idea. So they've, they've got some good, some good brands on that as well, so thanks everyone for your time, it was great to talk to you.
Sean, is that the official logo or the current version of the logo?
It is, that's right, Councilmember Baber, you, you've missed us the past couple times, yeah, that is, that is the logo, logo that we'll be unveiling on the 4th.
I, I know, I, and are the five elements, the five colors, the five cities?
Founding members, that's correct.
So when we add the six, do we add another color?
We are not, we're gonna, we're gonna keep homage to those who were.
Awesome.
The first to market with it.
The enlightened ones.
Okay, I'm good with that.
You can't tell future members that, though.
Yeah, exactly.
They don't get a color.
All right.
I guess don't roll back the tape.
Exactly. All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much, have a great night, everyone.
You too, happy Thanksgiving. Let's move on to item number seven, approval of the inclusive and sustainability, sustainable workforce policy. Is this COO Cody Hoven?
I think it's Sebastian, isn't it?
Oh, Sebastian?
He's been, he's shepherding this back and forth and modified it, and so this is kind of his baby.
So Sebastian's going to be our policy guru for the organization.
Yeah, yeah, if you will, hi, Chair Mosca, Vice Chair Padilla and members of the board. Before you were asking for your approval of the current draft of the inclusive and sustainable workforce policy. Just a little bit of background on that type of outreach that we did. We have brought this to both of our committees, we've brought it to our community advisory committee. And we've also brought it to our finance and risk management committee, as Director West mentioned earlier in the meeting. We've incorporated. Language from other inclusive and sustainable workforce policies seen throughout the state and other CCAs. We've looked at. Moving clean energy, we've looked at peninsula clean energy, and I believe also East Bay community energy. So we've done a little bit of homework and, and trying to make sure that this first draft is representative of our organization. The, the red marks that you see in the draft document are staff proposals that are new. And that were not seen by the FRMC at their last meeting. Those are on adding the word in benefit, and also adding additional placeholder language to three separate sections that are going to detail in a little bit. Those are own generation fitting tariff and energy efficiency programs. The, the document outlines efforts that SCCP will take in several fronts, one of them is on job outreach. It basically puts into paper what staff, what the executive staff will. Will encourage and, and will, will, will reach for in terms of getting a diverse and inclusive staff. That is representative of our regions. We've also included that in terms of our businesses that we partner with, I know we were all very proud of. Procuring businesses that are local, that are women owned, that are. Hispanic, black, etc., so we've added that to the document. We've also added components that are found throughout our JPA, which is the inclusion of prevailing wage and. And skilled and trained workforce that is also found throughout the document. On the three sections that are left as placeholders. Again, to recap, those are own generation fitting tariff and energy efficiency programs. Staff thought it would be best to develop those paragraphs as the actual programs are developed. And once those programs are near completion, those paragraphs, if you will, would come back to the board for final approval. We've also added union neutrality pledge on the document, as well as reporting metrics. For SCCP to build out a report on the diversity of our staff and also. The businesses that we partner up at, so, so that's something that, that we could present to the board on an annual basis, for example, and, and give you all statistics on. On, for example, we know how. Heavily male dominated the energy industry is and, and showing a little bit more. Showing us as, as a beacon of light, if you will, and bringing in more female voices to, to SCCP. So I'll, I'll pass right there, or actually, the, the only other thing I want to mention is that this is a living document. And obviously, we're a brand new organization. That means that things will change, things can change, and wanted to, to mention that as well. I'll pass right there for real, and can take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Sebastian, this is such an important policy, and I just want to underline what Sebastian said, which is, this is a, a document that will. You know, it's not etched in stone, and we can, we can adjust it and, and, and adapt it in the future, but, but it's important that from the get go that it represents our values. And the values of our communities, so want to make sure that the language is, is what you want it to be. So let's start off with any questions for Sebastian, any questions for Sebastian, Board Member Baber?
Um, Sebastian, I, I think I see a typo, can look at the sustainable workforce two, and then under A is PPAs. Now, you follow me? Sebastian?
Sorry, I wasn't.
Okay, yeah, okay, and now look underlined roman numeral II. It says employee license contracts and California certified electricians, I think it must mean. It should be employee properly licensed contractors. Can you go back and check, because you don't employ a contract, you employ a contractor, and you don't license a contract, you license a contractor. It's probably just a typo, can you check, because, or if it isn't a typo, can you just, I think it's supposed to be contractors.
My apologies, Director Baber, it is supposed to say contractors.
Okay, nice, so if we approve this, you'll make that typo change.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sebastian or, or any staff members?
I just have a, I just have a, I wanted to let the board know, so one of the concerns that Mr. Hermora and I had was with leaving. Those three paragraphs open, the feeding tariff and. I can't remember the other two, but, but I think it's important, we, we decided in the FRMC that it was so important to get this document out. To make sure that we adopt this inclusive and sustainable workforce policy is as fast as possible, because we're really moving forward with the. With this organization, and we need to make sure that this is a part of it, so those things are, I did say that I was uncomfortable with leaving portions that were open. But I felt that this document was so important that we needed to, and I hope that, you know, I directed. Bill and Sebastian to, to try to work for us to make sure that if we're bringing a document that it's fully complete, so we can get it, but. Like I said, this is so important to get out, we needed to get this out now.
Do you have a timeframe when we're going to basically be able to, to complete at least those three provisions?
Not on all three, but on the feeding tariff, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting. We, staff is projecting bringing forward a proposed. A feeding tariff program for the December meeting, so along with that, we'll come with a completed paragraph for this section.
All right.
I think most likely that energy efficiency probably would come along next, and own generation would probably be the third, be the furthest out, because it's going to be a while for, we're going to be able to do that. Would be, would be my guess at this point.
Right. All right, Megan. Go ahead, sorry.
Hey, Mark, Eddie brought up. The, using the phrase communities of concern instead of communities and colors, I'm not sure that I understand the nuance, did you have a discussion about whether it was communities of concern or communities of color?
Yeah, I, thanks for reminding me about that, Bill, I actually wrote it down too, and I forgot about it as well, so I, I don't remember that, but if we could make sure that we go through the document to make sure that it does reflect that. I think that's important to have those, almost like the. Yeah, we, we definitely need to make sure that it reflects that instead of, uh, uh, communities of color, because I, I don't remember that, I thought, I thought we. Pulled all that, we stripped all that stuff out to make sure it said communities of concern, but I don't, I, I don't remember that being in the document, so. It's been a couple weeks since I've reviewed this, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, it. If I may chime in on that, so obviously, the, the wording communities of, of concern is found in our JPA. However. Staff thought it would be best to not use that wording yet, because we don't have a SCCP defined community self-concern. We, we have a city of San Diego defined community self-concern, but in terms of when staff can prioritize outreach. We, we would, at, at least myself would be limited to reaching out to a city of San Diego to find committees of concern, and. We, we, we had some discussions on, on that wording, and once a communities of concern definition is, is established. We can, we can change what is found in, in this draft document here.
That's right, thank you, thank you, Sebastian, I remember now the discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Sebastian, I, I just want to follow up on that real quick, you. Are, are we saying that not everyone classifies. Communities that are. I, I don't like this word, but underserved as communities of concern, is it more of a classification issue?
I'm, I'm basing it off the, so because of my background in the city of San Diego and the work that, that we did with the CEI was. We grabbed the current virus screen census tracts, and then we added additional census tracts that weren't traditionally included in those. And because that's a definition, like geographically, those are found. Because the city of San Diego only did it for the city of San Diego, we don't have that for the other member cities. And so that's something that we're working on with member city staff to come up with an SCCP community self-concern definition. And, and it is my understanding that the city of Chula Vista is working on a CEI. So, so we may use those two, and then for the other cities, depending on where they're at, if. Your city councils is doing a definition on your own, we could do that, or it, or do it an SCCP defined one. I see Cody, you unmuted yourself, I don't know if you want to add it, add something.
I was just going to say, you know, we might be overly cautious on this, and so if it's something that you all feel comfortable with that term, I think it's picking up. You know, becoming a common term, at least in our region, so I'd be comfortable if you want to either add it back in or revise what we say here, and I think. We could kind of take note of what that might mean and make sure we know. You know, it's not a capitalized predefined geographic area, but it's a, it's an intent that we understand.
I'd be comfortable with, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I may, I may say something different, I, I just want to make sure that we are being, you know, as inclusive as possible, and it does sound like the term that is currently being used may be that. Just because the other term, like I was getting to, is this more of a classification issue? I could, I could. Change it as well, I would be supportive of that, but I'm, I'm understanding the intent now, so I, you know, I'm, I'm okay either way.
I think what, what we'd like to hear from you is making sure that that phrase, the intent is clear to everybody, because that's what, we're so far in the weeds, sometimes we think it's clear, so making sure it's clear to you all is important.
I think it's fine, I, I think that's our intent, and I think it's fine with listing it, and then working with, with the member cities on, on. On just further defining that, and then bringing it back to us. Because, yeah, I mean, from a policy perspective, this seems like a, a tremendous amount of work. Trying to, to, to define it, so it sounds like it's going to be definitely a, a conversation for us in the future.
I, 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 I will second what you're saying there, Chair.
All right. All right, Megan, you said there was a public comment on this item?
Yes, it's from Jason Anderson on behalf of Clean Tech San Diego. Clean Tech San Diego supports the inclusive and sustainable workforce policy and recommends adopting it as drafted. We appreciate your commitment to supporting regional job creation for all, and that concludes the public comment for this item.
Perfect, all right, any other questions or comments, or, or I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair.
Just briefly, with respect to the carve out sections that we're moving for, appreciate the work at the committee level, and I know that we've all heard from various. Constituent groups and advocacy groups with respect to that, I just want to just put again on the record. This particular director's personal values. And I, but I think are the values of this organization, and that is with respect to program and any personnel or human resource impacts of program. That may be directly impacted by the policy framework that we adopt for the remaining sections, I think it's important, at least for me. That we really do think a lot about, you know, maintaining workforce protection standards. Looking at prevailing wage standards and making sure that we are supporting the workforce and advancing the workforce in those areas. You know, consistent with our values as well, so I hope those are part of that, and will be part of that conversation as, as we move forward. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you for those comments, agreed.
I'll move the item, member, I mean, Chair Mosca, if you need a motion.
All right, motion by, motion by Director Baber and, and second by Director West.
Chair, just a question about that, are we changing that, the phrase to communities of concern within that motion?
Yes, we're going to do that, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I just want to make sure it was clear.
All right, and is that good with you, Motion Maker Baber and second?
Yes, yeah, we're changing that word, and then we're fixing the typo, was my understanding.
Yes, absolutely, and then, and then we're going to be working on a de- definition for communities of concerns, working with all of our member cities.
Yes, I, I just want, one last thing also about with regard to the, the apprenticeship language in here, I think it's good language. Support the local workforce development pathways, just. If we could somehow include in the conversation, just. Checking in on the diversity in apprenticeships as well, and ensuring that, you know, we're partnering. With folks who have those same values in that area too.
I think that's important, good comment. Cody, did you want to say anything about that?
I, I think that's great, and I agree with you, I was searching through the document while you're saying that to see where. Just to be clear, did you want to change any language, or are you just a general comment?
No, just a comment, I think something that is already sort of in the spirit of the document, but. We should definitely just continue to keep an eye on that, I think. but um, we should definitely just continue to keep an eye on that, I think.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Director Montgomery, or Director West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, um, so the next item, uh, well, this is, uh, we're at the end of our agenda. So let's go to uh, director comments. Any comments by my fellow directors? Vice Chair Padilla?
I just want to say it's great to see everyone's face. I know we're coming to the end of a very interesting year. I know that for myself, I have much to be thankful for this year, including working with all of you. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nice comments. Uh, Director West?
Um, I just want everybody to know that uh, this will be my last uh, board meeting with uh, San Diego Community Power. And I I am, um, I really believe that of all of the the boards and commissions that I sit on and work with, this is the one that's doing the most impactful work and the most meaningful work in our entire county. And I think I am honored that I uh, was able to work with my fellow board members um, to get this started. And I I look forward to seeing um, San Diego Community Power grow in the future. And I think that uh, um, your work that we are all doing here, because it's not just the board, it's the the community advisory committee and all the people that are supporting us is is really important. And I I feel better because I know each and every one of you and I've worked with each and every one of you. So um, thank you so much for this time and um, uh, good luck, fair winds and following seas. This is going to be a great uh, a great group. And um, yeah, thank you very much for letting me uh, let me serve with you.
Thank you, Mark. It's been a pleasure uh, working with you. I, you know, we've been friends, uh, but this is the first time I've had a chance to serve with you on a board. Uh, and I've really, you know, just really uh, loved serving with you. And I think that you, you bring so much to the conversation. You're an absolute asset for this board and representing IB and and always thinking about the entire region. So thank you for for everything that you've brought to this board. Uh, thank you for your service. Director Baber?
Uh, I just wanted to say the same thing, Mark. You've been great. I appreciate your leadership. I really enjoy working with you. I will definitely miss you and thank you for all you've done for us. And um, maybe, you know, the public may never realize all the work you did to get us um, going, but I do. And I I totally appreciate what you've done for us.
Mr. Chair, I think we're going to have Mark back, I hope, next month, I believe, or I was told. I was short thrifted, but I will just echo what everyone else said as well. Uh, Mark, you're a gem, you know, I love you. You've done great work for this region and um, I I have no doubt you have much more to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And and I hope we, I hope we do uh, so that we can properly recognize uh, Director West for his contributions.
I I just want to chime in really quick and and say thank you, Mark. Um, especially for bailing us out at one of those seminars we went, we went to. Scared to speak because I'm like, I'm one month into this thing and he just stepped up like a champ, like the champ that he is. And I really enjoyed getting to know you uh, on this board. So I I appreciate you and thank you for your service as well.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. I I think I was sick in bed and and Director West jumped up for me. So awesome. That's awesome.
She's like, can you at least go to the stage with me? I'm like, nope, I'm not going.
All right, um, well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Um, I am very um, very thankful uh, for uh, for all of you and thankful for this organization. Uh, SDCP has been just a, you know, passion of mine and and I've really enjoyed working with all of you and very thankful for you guys. Happy Thanksgiving. Um, and the next meeting is December seventeenth and that will be our meeting for December. So thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kimmy.
Bye, guys. Good night.